Good. Good afternoon slash evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 23rd, 2024 Board of Trustees Regular Board Meeting for Kitsap Regional Library. I am President Eric Fong. With me are Stephanie George, Marwan Cameron, Eric Sisney. Vice President Gina Steiner is out on an excused absence today. So we'll call the meeting to order at 5:31. We'll go to the Kitsap Regional Library Mission Statement. Marwan, can you read the mission statement for us, please?
Inspiring curiosity and connection.
Thank you so much, and I'll hand it off to Jason for welcoming introductions.
Good evening. With me tonight are Executive Assistant Tammy Jeffries, Deputy Director, Chief Financial and Operating Officer Dan Baer, Director of Human Resources and Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Lacretia Robertson, Director of Strategy and Communication, Jeanne Allen, and last but certainly not least, the Director of Information Technology and Facilities, Mike Rose. And we have a special guest tonight with us who will be sharing with us a mission moment. We have Kiefer, who is in, Kiefer is in our custodial department. He's a custodial specialist, and we're grateful that he's joined us tonight to talk about his passion for a collection of library memorabilia.
That's it. All right, thank you, Jason. Looking forward to that presentation. Number, Agenda Item Number Four. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Nope. There's also no public comment, so we will go to Agenda Item Six, Consent Agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. We have 6.01, minutes of the June 25th Regular Board Meeting, 6.02, minutes of the July 19th Board Retreat Meeting, and 6.03, payment of June 2024 bills, and 6.04, surplus library materials withdrawn from the collection for June 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I saw a move.
Second?
A second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And we'll go to 7.01, Mission Story, Inspiring Curiosity and Connection, Through a Personal Collection of Library Memorabilia by Kiefer Wheeler, Custodian Specialist. Kiefer, welcome. The floor is yours. Thank you for being here today.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to pass this out before I get started. If you don't do this, you're listed in the Black Knight areas, all the pamphlets of literature, and you call away this and part collection itself.
Fantastic, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kiefer Wheeler. I've been working with Kitsap Regional Library for the last about year and three months. We started as a part-time custodian substitute, and now we have moved on up to full-time working at Silverdale and Port Orchard in Manchester. But starting next week, we will be over at the Little Boston, Kingston, and Bainbridge Island. The passion that I've had for libraries has gone as far back as I've been a kid. We used to go almost every single day to multiple different ones, starting from Tacoma Public all the way down to King County. And we would only have a couple. Most of them back then used to be literature libraries and not so much media, and that's what we would go for. And King County used to have, in my opinion, one of the biggest and, at the time, the best that I'd seen. And we'd only seen a couple, but I had seen that there was multiple, multiple branches. I was always told by my family, those are too far to go see, and all I had was just pictures of them to go off of. And years and years later, forgot all about it, and we moved up to Woodinville. And I'm like, I saw that library like 20 years ago, the picture. And I got to go into it, and then we just kept spiraling, and it got bigger. And now personally, 200 libraries have been visited, over 200 cards. At my last job, there was a lot of downtime, and so a lot of the coworkers I had, they didn't care that I would call different libraries across the country, spread what I did, told what I did. And a lot of times at the end of the week, I would check my mailbox, and there would be a huge stack of cards and literature, and some of them would reach out more with personal cards and information. And then it just snowballed from there. So every time I meet somebody and I see that they have an out-of-state driver's license, I always make that a question to see if they have a card by chance that's out of state or family members. Whenever they go out, they're always trying to request one for me, and they'll sometimes make it all the way out of their travels just to stop at some really rural library just to get a card. Even if it's just a blank piece of paper that says "library," I want to add it to the collection and just keep it growing. I would say in this state, I have probably completed about 50% of visiting all of them. I've gone as far as just one day, driving almost 100 miles just to visit one library, and I want to keep it going. There's a lot more that I'd like to see, and it's, I don't want it to end. I want to keep this going. I was afraid during COVID that the library would shut down, because when I lived in Pierce County, it was over a year before the branches started opening back up, and there was talk that they weren't going to open. And then when they did start to open, there was a bunch of newsletters coming out saying that the attendance wasn't what they thought it would be, and that they didn't really see that they were going to keep continuing it. But they are still open, thank goodness, and I would just like to keep it going. And I'm happy that I got to work here finally. I didn't think whatever happened, I thought I was just going to be stuck in retail, but I'm at a job that I like. I meet a lot of people that I like. I got a lot of support from all the staff and coworkers, and that's what I got to spread about, the libraries and me. Thank you.
Oh, Kiefer, thank you for the, thank you for the presentation. We want you to stay up here, because I think there are going to be a lot of questions for you. Very much appreciate your passion. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
I'm, no rush. I'm next, but.
Well, I, I love this because, Kiefer, it didn't, you know, it didn't occur to me, because when we go on vacation, we just check out where the library is and don't always go in. It wouldn't occur to me that you could go in and just ask for a blank card or whatever.
Sometimes it's really hard. Sometimes the library, you got to really drill it to them and say, it doesn't have to be inactive. And then after about five times, they finally get it, and then you get the card. And sometimes you almost feel like defeated, because you'll see the card, and it'll just be plain white and just say "library," and you're like, I shouldn't have pushed that hard for this card. But I've gotten some really cool cards, and even the ones that have nothing to it, they still mean something to me, and they still mean something to keep the libraries going. I've seen libraries that are super artistic. I've seen libraries that were literally just a shack with a couple of books and a couple of movies. They even have a library that is on a river. I forgot what state it was in, but there's a guy that goes up and down a river once a week, and he just has all of his material in bags and just goes up and down on a raft. And I'm always trying to find something new about the library I didn't know. I'm happy with the position I'm at, but I would like to see what else Kitsap Library has to offer and go from there. But if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for you. You have a letter in there from El Rito, New Mexico.
Yeah.
Asking you to send, you know, some of the pictures. Do you know if you've inspired any other people around the country to do what you're doing?
I was always told that people would do it, and then a lot of times it just kind of fizzled out. And then when I would call back, it would be somebody that had no idea what I was talking about. Some libraries that I presented this to, a story that I shared with Jason last week, was I was trying to get this library card in this small town that's at the very bottom of Washington, right on the Oregon border, and flat-out no. And it was like a three-hour drive to be told no. And I was like, man. And we go to Oklahoma, and we're looking all over for this library, and it keeps taking us to this empty field. I'm like, man, I don't want to give up on it. And it was the Sac and Fox Nation Tribal Library. And I go, I bet they have a Facebook. And luckily, they did, and the address was like a mile difference. And so I go there, I do the whole spiel, show them the cards, and then, I didn't want her to do this, but she walked in on them having a big meeting and interrupted him and was like, hey, this is what he does. And the guy was gracious enough to give me his own personal card. And a lot of the other libraries, some are really happy, like Detroit Public really showed a lot of support. They sent me the whole blueprint to their building. One of the libraries in Maine sent a personal card, and King County Library, the Algonah Pacific one, they had a huge backstock of cards that I hadn't seen in years, and they were more than happy to give me the whole stack for nothing.
What libraries are on your wish list?
Orcas Island, a bunch of the island ones. I've never been northeast of Washington. Like, I'd like to go all the way up to like Twisp, but when I look it up now, I just, I don't have it like I used to do, that 100 miles just for one library, and there's nothing else in the town, and my family won't put up with it too much. And like, when we go on vacation, it's always, you can get like two thrift stores in like one library or the other way around. And it's like, that's always the point of a vacation, that has to come up at some point of what can be visited and what's the proximity of where it's at.
It's really cool. Thank you for sharing.
I appreciate you. Anyone else?
Now, what's, you had mentioned you drove 100 miles for one library. What is it that compels you to drive? Like, how do you decide, like, this is a library that is worth driving to?
So in there are some really gross folded-up papers that I've had for years, and they're in alphabetical order. And each one that has a dot next to it is one that I personally visited. And so what I would try to do was like, do like Timberland by itself, and then like King by itself, and then go from there. And I was really trying to finish Timberland Library at one point. I thought that was the biggest one, but it wasn't. And I drove to this one called, it's either Amanda Park or Holly Park. Had no service, there was nothing around. I was in the woods, and it was really stormy out. My car was giving me problems, but I just, I made it to that library, and I made it home, thank goodness. But yeah, there's definitely been some drives where I'm like, is it really worth it to go all the way out here? And sometimes I have gone all the way there, and then either the library is no longer there, or it's been abandoned, or they're like, we don't have a card. And I'm like, but whenever we find a new one, I'll do, let me see if I, I'll go outside, I'll look for the sign that has what the library is called, and take a picture of that with the building in the back, and then I'll go inside, do one full lap, see what they have for sale, and then I'll present that material and see if they'll participate and help and donate.
Very good. Wow. I've also seen, and you mentioned that sometimes you get family members to send you cards. I've seen, like, I saw cards from like Montana, New Jersey, New York. Are those vacations that you plan with the intention of specifically visiting the library? Or is that kind of, you visit the library when you happen to be in the area or?
If I'm in the area, but if I know that a family member is going, I will mention it. But I get that sometimes it's a hassle, and they're not going to have the same drive as I do, so they won't be as persistent. But I totally get it. I'm happy with what I've gotten. And like my mother-in-law, she went to some really rural part of Alaska, and she walked like an hour. There was like no, nothing. And she was like walking through the woods to find this library, and she got to the top, and it was just this big windy hill down, and there was nothing. And it was, it's a really basic card, but she was like, I hope you know that I walked hours for this. And I was like, I appreciate you.
Don't lose that, don't lose that card.
Yes, definitely. My mother-in-law is the one that I would say probably has contributed the most cards. She's always reaching out to family members. She used to do foster care, and a lot of her kids that she fostered are spread out throughout the country, so there's always a point to say, if you got time, this would be like really greatly appreciated, and it would go to something good. And yeah, we've accumulated quite a bit, and we're still adding to it.
Wow. That's incredible. Do you have a goal, all of Washington State, or you're just going where, going where your heart takes you?
Both. At one part, I would like to see everyone in Washington, but that list is so outdated, and if I looked it up again and saw that there was more, I'd be kind of bummed. And if I was over there, great, yes, I would stop, but I can't drive five hours anymore. Like, one time for my birthday, my wife surprised me and was like, we're going to go to all of Spokane and Spokane County. We didn't do it all, because we ran out of time, but we got about 19 in one day, and that was just Spokane and Spokane Valley. And then I was telling Jason about this one, it was, one day I had nothing to do, and my wife is at work, and she goes, why don't you go see all the Seattle Public? And there was like four that I'd already seen, so there left about like 20, 22 to 24. And I just started from one point and just for like the next like 10 hours, just crisscross and cross-reference and stopped here and stopped there and talked with that library and to say, what's the best route to go to get to this one, to over there? And then we're done. I never wanted to do that library system. I despise Seattle, but it's done. It's gone. But that library, they have the most cards that I do not have that I would like to get from them. They weren't playing my game of, we'll give you six cards. They were like, we'll give you one. And it was really hard to pick, because they had, at the time, they had some really cool designs. But yeah, they weren't playing. They were like, you get one, no more. So eventually, if we ever do get up there, I will try to get some more Seattle ones, hopefully. But yes.
That's, that's fantastic. I love this story. I love your passion, and I'm glad you're here.
Thank you, man. I appreciate you.
Anybody have any other questions?
My daughter works at Seattle Library and maybe talk to me, and I'll see if I can get any more for you over there.
That would be much appreciated. Thank you.
I worked there for 39 years.
What branch?
Just the Central Library, but anyway, yeah. Glad to try to help.
The big Seattle one with the five stories?
Yeah, the downtown library.
Okay.
Yeah. I didn't like the new, I don't like the new building, but I worked on the old one for a long time.
It's overwhelming. It's too much. You don't need a lot to make a library good.
Well, Kiefer, I just want to tell you thank you for sharing your passions. And the question was asked in the beginning, who, you know, how did you get inspired and who have you inspired? You've inspired me, and as a person who is nerdy and visits library, I'm the person who goes to libraries on vacation. In fact, I went to a library on my honeymoon in Jamaica, and I am going to think about you when I travel now specifically to try to get library cards. And so I just want to thank you for sharing your passion, because it is contagious. And I know you've inspired the staff that you've shown this collection to, and you certainly have inspired all of us, and you perfectly exude what our mission is about. And those two cards from the Greater Victoria, curious and adventurous, that's what you are, and I just want to implore you to keep doing what you're doing, and I hope you're a Kitsap Regional Library employee for years to come. And I also want to thank, you know, your supervisor of charity and your director, Mike, for letting you come and do this tonight, because I really wanted to showcase this to the board. And so I'm thank you that they allowed you to come here and hang out with us tonight. We appreciate you.
Thank you all so much, and I appreciate the time that you guys gave me. And one more thing I'd like to add, I also have a library card tattoo, and it's an old style one, and the due dates are my wife's birthday, my kid's birthday, and our wedding anniversary. And we're going to get more work to it to give it like more authentic look of it, like wrinkled and torn. But it took forever to find a library card tattoo that would do it, and that was the one we finally came up with. It was either that or the library symbol of the silhouette reading the book, but we chose a card. But thank you all so much.
Thank you. Wow. Fantastic. So we'll go to, with that, we'll go to Agenda Item 7.02. Wow, that presentation makes me feel like I haven't done anything.
I thought I was passionate, but I'm not getting into two. But that did inspire me. I mean, we do actually go visit libraries when we hit cities, but I will also be thinking about Kiefer. My report really involved just being at the recent study session and retreat and getting excited about, we were really looking at data in preparation for future consideration of the levy. And so that was a good day, very worthwhile information, so that's really my focus this time.
I stay the same. The board retreat was really very educational and inspiring.
I would ditto that statement. Jason said our guest was coming today, and as I read the mission, it's such a simple mission, but it really is inspiring, and I really look forward to the people that come and share their passion. It's just, it is really inspirational, and there's a lot of things going on, and it really is a bright spot to my month. So I appreciate it, Jason, and I appreciate all the staff that come and share. Thank you for queuing it up for us.
Well, thank you. And I don't have, I don't have a board update for this month. So we'll go to 7.03, Finance Committee Report. Mr. Eric Sisney.
Well, boring was one word, I guess, because everything is great. Revenues are coming in as expected, and expenses are, I think, a little lower than expected, and so everything's great.
All right. Thanks. Any questions about the Finance Committee Report? Actually, we'll just go to 7.04, and then we can talk about finances from there. 7.04, Financial Report. Dan, anything to add to the report that you've submitted?
I have nothing to add to my boring report. Glad to take some interesting questions.
Eric drank some truth serum today.
I feel it's really boring comparing to Eric's report here, or Kiefer's report here that he did, so.
In light of just the world, it feels grateful and thankful to have steady-as-you-go and boring financial reports, and always appreciate the detailed notations.
Thank you.
I'd like to say one thing, that we all appreciate Dan's work. He went into the work that he does to, his whole staff does to prevent any fraud, and just the great work that they do. I think we all need to compliment him and his staff.
Yes, thank you, Dan. Appreciate your work. Appreciate your updates. With that, we'll go to 7.05, Library Directors Report. Jason.
Thank you.
To you.
Technical difficulty. Well, so summer is in full swing. In June, we kicked off our annual summer learning program, and it has been wonderful wading to wonder, so hopefully you're wading into those books that you're reading. I know my family has taken our dip into reading, and hopefully we'll get to our 100 hours so we can all sport t-shirts. And even though staff get t-shirts, I feel disingenuous wearing it without recording my 100 hours. And so I'm going to wait until I actually reach the 100-hour mark, but really just want to talk about how successful summer has been, not only for Kitsap Regional Library, but for library systems as a whole. As you know, especially post-COVID, even looking at my own children's, you know, scores and just in general where folks are in terms of attendance, graduation rates, I think, like beating the drum about the efficacy of summer reading and stemming the summer slide is really important, and partnerships that can exist in order to deepen our impact. That's what the library's really been looking into. So we've been fortunate to really think about strategy and summer learning and how we can continue to make the summer reading program successful, and how can we not rest on our laurels and continue to try to make this program exciting and enticing for people to participate in. Really want to thank all of the teams that work tirelessly throughout the year to make summer a success. For those who don't know, summer learning is, for the most part, a year-round planning process. And save but maybe a month, a month and a half during the summer where the programs launch, really afterwards, it's immediately into conversation to start planning the next one. And so, you know, communications, public services, our collection and technical services unit, and all of our branch teams obviously are instrumental in planning and implementing summer. And so, you know, beyond the traditional methods of promotion, we're really looking at how can we deepen the impact? We developed a partnership even this year with Julius Blackwell of Doc Loves the Kids to try to talk about how we can get summer to kids who are resource, who are lacking resources. And so, you know, we entertain methods of which to do that, you know, giving Mr. Blackwell summer materials with all the dates of programs and events, and he entertained the notion of trying to find transportation to even bus families to major programs. And so it feels good to at least start to work with partners who are really making impact with the kids, and not that, you know, more resource families don't need the program, but we know that the children who are really going to benefit are the children who don't have the resources to do enriching summer activities, i.e. sleepaway camp and museums and zoos and summer trips, right? Those are all enriching things that help add to your repertoire of knowledge. And so fortunately for library, summer reading and summer learning programs, they're thematic programs that often encourage you to explore various themes, and obviously you can read anything you want, and all learning counts. And it's what I used to always say as a practicing youth services librarian, I don't care for kids reading, you know, my name placard. That counts, because, you know, it's really important that we encourage kids to dig into reading and, you know, we can address those challenges and stay fresh with our content, too. You know, I met with our team recently to just try to get a better understanding of how we plan summer, what sort of things go into planning summer, and so that I can have a real clear understanding of, you know, some of the things we might need to do in order to make it more impactful in the future. So I'm really happy summer's here, and we're going to continue trying to push in with local organizations to try to develop partnerships and to think out of the box with summer, too, and not rest on what we have already. So I'm interested to see how this program will develop throughout the years, and I'm really interested in tying it to our strategic plan. June, I attended American Library Association Conference with Mr. Mike Rose and Dan Baer, who attended this year as well, along with other staff. And really, the highlights for me in that were sessions around, particularly around advocacy and a roadmap to success in terms of making sure we educate the public about libraries and to educate the public about the power of libraries, and also to educate the library about, the public about funding of libraries. And so it was a really impactful session to talk with other thought leaders about how to make a successful library advocacy campaign, and so that was really instrumental. Other sessions, obviously AI is all over the map now. There are many sessions about how to implement AI tools within the organization and cautionary red flags for, you know, implementing AI. And then as well, lots of committee meetings. I've talked previously about working as an ALA counselor to work in the governance sector of ALA, and that's been enlightening over the last couple of years, and certainly honored to have been selected to be on ALA council. And then lots of committee meetings from when I was a youth service librarian, still continuing to manage book award committees. And so I'll be tailing off once my commitments are done for that. And so it was a successful conference. It was good to also talk to vendors who we have relationships with, and so it's important at those conferences to continue to build relationships and to look for new products for library services. And then recently, we revamped our recognition process under the leadership of Lacretia Robertson. We've revamped how we recognize people who staff nominate for awards. We wanted to tether those to our new values, and so we've done that. And the first iteration of that has been released. And so our three service categories obviously are service equity and curiosity. And in the service category, it's about, you know, staff being able to listen, adapt, and ask questions. Michelle Williams, Library Associate at Little Boston, Alex Sanchez, Library Assistant at Sylvan Way, and M. Harris, Library Assistant at Sylvan Way are winners in that category. And these are, again, nominated by peers and then drawn by human resources. And then the second category of equity opportunity for all, Patrick Gulkey, who's a library associate at Bainbridge, Anna Cooper Comas, Branch Manager at Silverdale. And then in the curiosity category, supporting meaningful change, Caitlin Nicholas, that's a typo in the report. She's not at Bainbridge, she's on Jeanne, Jeanne Allen's team as a content specialist in communications. So proud of all the folks who are the first iterations of these three categories, and so hopefully where people are. so hopefully where people are aligning their nominations to these categories. And then we're just actually exuding what these mean for us in the workplace, and still talking about and unpacking what these values mean, what our vision means. And speaking of that, we're starting to do more education about components of our strategic plan. In July, for instance, the communications team is featuring through our leadership messages information about our vision and what that means. So in an effort to really get the entire organization on board, we try to message what's happening with categories like this, like our vision, for instance. We're focusing on building this collaborative community, which is inspired by our mission, so that all people have the opportunity to grow, thrive, and belong. So that's been evident in lots of ways, and really want to highlight that this month in our collaboration with both the Broomerton School District, as well as the South Kitsap School District, and the free lunch programs that have been happening in our libraries. And so it's been really neat to see, although I've known that this has existed the last couple of years, just to see it in action again, and to see how filled the room has been at Sylvan Way. I haven't observed the one that's been in Port Orchard, nor in MLK. But it's really notable that every day I peek in that room, it's jam-packed with families who are getting free meals. And I guess really the real carrot is, having summer learning draws people in. Having people in provides an opportunity to have a meal. And so, you know, tethering that back to our vision, like, what does it mean to have the whole community thrive, right? What does that really mean? So that means, you know, collaborating with other organizations. I think we realize, and we realized a long time ago in planning the strategic plan, it's like, we can't be everything and everybody. And we certainly know that, and it's going to be sort of an overused term for us when we start trying to build things to impact everybody, but we understand that services like free meals, along with the summer, certainly creates a more deepened impact for our folks who are in. We wouldn't be able to do it without those partnerships. So understanding that libraries are free and open access, and we often have many people cross our threshold, it's an opportunity for you to take in a meal or two, and to take in a program or two, and to stay cool during that hot stretch we got, especially when I got back from sunny San Diego, which was 75, and just beautiful every day. And I got back here, which is beautiful here, of course, but we were just in, I can tell you I've been here too long now, where 85 was too hot for me when I got back. And so it's been really good to have that vision be spotlighted in different areas of the library. And so, lastly, summer safety topic is never a fun one to talk about, active threat, often referred to as active shooter, but we know that summer is a time where typically these types of situations are increased, just because the weather's typically warmer and more people are out. And so cycling these topics back through, because you've now seen it in my report probably for a third time, so just really wanting to give the board a clear picture of some of the, you know, things that are happening in summer, and human resources to keep people safe and to keep people well. And so it's a continual process. We have a wonderful human resources team that is, you know, all out for making sure people are getting trained in all aspects of everything we're trying to do for the organization. But it's important to, especially as we have new staff on, and that's why we recycle these topics, because, you know, we're a changing organization, and we have folks who leave the organization, and we have quite a few new staff members who come aboard. And so having this training be an open-ended one that folks can take throughout the summer is important, too, and not putting any real deadlines on the training in terms of, you have to do it now, but giving them a window of time to do it and observe the resources, and letting them pick the resources that are important for them is important. So that's what we highlighted in June for safety. And that's all I have. Pretty short report tonight, and any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate the report and the updates. Does anybody have any questions? The active threat training is just something that I've never had to deal with, and so that just hits me every time I see that, you know, whether the libraries go through it or the schools go through it, it just hits me hard, so.
Yeah, I mean, look, we're public places, too, and so with the understanding that there are zero barriers, and so having training to keep staff aware and safe in all aspects is important. And so we recognize the fact that sometimes staff are in vulnerable positions, and so a lot goes into training, and a lot goes into making sure people know how to ask for help and know what to look out for. And certainly, we have to deepen our impact in that area and make sure that we, you know, we have excellent Ryan Dahl training dealing with not only unhoused populations, but dealing with folks who have various presentations, behavioral presentations that one might need to be aware of when approaching people, because a lot of times our staff are enforcing our library guidelines in a way that makes, you know, people, it puts people in vulnerable situations, when you have to go to bathrooms, and you have to ask people to come out, or you have to ask people if they're okay because they've been in for a half hour or an hour. And so recognizing that our frontline staff are in the crosshairs, we're always thinking about them and making sure we have good policy procedure and process in order to make sure people are safe. And it's an ongoing environment where we have to continually adapt, and we have to continually figure out what resources we need to bring in. And again, that's where the realization of our vision is important, too, because it allows us to reach out to our community partners in the county who are doing good work, and have the professionals who can help us in that regard. And so, we aren't experts in this area, but we know that being an open and free access model of service delivery kind of makes us vulnerable to having, you know, any and everybody come into our places, which is a good thing. We want everybody to be in our places. But with that, sometimes comes some extra scrutiny and attention. So thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Oh, go ahead.
I was also someplace during the really hot weather where it was just a little bit more temperate, and I can't remember if I saw this. Does the library serve as an active designated cooling center? Did I see that? Okay.
Yeah, libraries have always, well, and especially, yes, we're cooling and warming centers. And so, yeah, definitely during hotter months, we see a lot of people coming in for some AC and vice versa. So it's good.
I happened to think about it only because I was reading an article about facilities, and just, and given the retreat, we were thinking about the value-added proposition of the role that libraries play that we don't often think about, like feeding kids and serving as cooling centers and stuff. And again, the, I mean, we're here, and I still don't think of it sometimes. And so that the community, you know, just we keep messaging that in so many ways, because I think it's taken for granted.
It is. So if there are no other questions, I'd like to wish my wife a happy birthday, if she's watching. This is a big birthday for her, so happy birthday, Annie.
Happy birthday. All right. So we'll go to 8.01, Sylvan Way Capital Project, Year One Measurement and Verification Report. I'll hand it off to Mike Rose.
Good evening, board members. So last week, Dan and I received a report on the Year One Measurement and Verification Testing that was conducted following our major McKinstry Capital Project. And Jason asked me to give you a little bit of background and briefly summarize that report. So simply by way of background, starting back in August of 2021, Kitsap Regional Library entered into an energy savings performance contract with a company called McKinstry out of Seattle to address several concerns raised by the library specifically regarding the Sylvan Way branch. These included aging and inconvenient HVAC controls, outdated electrical switchgear, and leaking roof and skylights. Perhaps more importantly, the leaking roof and skylights were leaking onto the aging electrical switchgear, creating a whole different set of complications. Additionally, both the Sylvan Way location and the Palswell location had a mixture of fluorescent, high-intensity discharge, and halogen lighting in the parking lot areas, which were aging and inefficient. I think it's important to note that, and we can get Dan's input here, because he was involved in the origin of this project before I came onboard, but this project was not really intended as a means to revitalize or renew Sylvan Way necessarily, but it was really a means to extend its operational life long enough to develop and implement a long-term plan for its replacement, and quite literally prevent some safety issues related to the water leaking onto the switchgear. So this project was literally to keep the lights on at Sylvan, and the energy savings that we gained by it really represent a bonus for us. This project was, the project provided a new HVAC control system at Sylvan Way, an upgraded electrical switchgear, and perhaps most importantly, it replaced the leaking roof and the skylights. Also, the non-LED exterior lighting at Sylvan Way and the Palswell location were all upgraded to new LED lamps and fixtures. Construction of these items was officially completed in March of 2023, and the evaluation of the savings associated with these upgrades was begun at that time. This past week, Dan and I met with the McKinstry team that has been measuring the true energy and cost savings realized through this project to receive a summary of the first-year results. McKinstry has calculated the following annual energy use reductions, including 136,465 kilowatt-hours of electricity, and 476 kilowatt-hours of connected electrical load that was all reduced by this project. I'll put that in context in just a second. But this means that we used at Sylvan Way over 136,000 kilowatt-hours less than the previous year. In addition, our electrical system is drawing 476 kilowatts less of electricity due to the replacement of the parking lot lights alone. So this amounts to an approximate annual savings of, in 2021 dollars, when this project was begun, $16,500. That's $20.21 in 2021 electrical fees. Transform that to 2024 values, and we're talking about over $20,000 a year in savings associated with this project. And that, those savings, that number will continue to go up as utility fees go up, obviously. But a side note on the environmental benefits accomplished by this project, if you are interested in this sort of thing, the reduction in energy, this reduction in energy use realized a reduction in our carbon footprint of over 94 metric tons per year. Or if you want to think of it in terms of acreage, it's like planting 20, over 26 acres of new trees each year. So, all in all, that boils down what was in this first-year report that we received. And, I mean, it's a great energy savings and environmental impact project that we did, which is, like I said, a side benefit to keeping us all dry inside the building. So, anything else, Dan, that you want to add or comment on?
Well, just to add to the color of the project, the transformer outside that supplies the building with all of its electricity was being severely overtaxed every time we hit the heating systems with that, to the point where we thought we had to replace that as well. But we averted that danger as well.
Yeah, interestingly enough, there are 12 HVAC control, main HVAC units that feed Sylvan Way, in addition to several add-on little mini-split systems that are throughout the system. But all 12 of those main, big, huge air handlers all kicked on at exactly the same time every day, according to the schedule that it was on. And so, I mean, PSE would actually, was, we were causing damage to our transformer that feeds our building because of the massive increased load that was happening at the exact same time every day. And with the controls alone, we're able to stagger those startups according to the needs of the building and the different areas of the building. And so that alone reduces our energy load quite a bit, but also reduces the taxation on the transformer and the need to replace it, so.
We appreciate the follow-up for this. Jason really was talking about this project at the retreat, kind of, that it was going to be part of his report, and kind of hit that number, you know, when we were there. And we're like, we really need to bring this forward and hear more detail, because some of us were here when that McKinstry project was started. And then again, in light of information we're getting around with levees in terms of the aging, the age of buildings and all the different things, but also just the stewardship conversation in terms of, we think about our stewardship role in terms of the annual operations budget, but if you're not paying attention to every component that's sort of maybe taking away from those dollars. So it was really an incredible message, and wanted to see the full circle of this project. So appreciate all of you taking the extra time to bring that forward.
This impact really surprised me when I heard about it in the retreat. I'm a visual person. Is there any way that we could show the graph for those that would watch it later on? Because it's so powerful, and I don't think people really can get the sense of how much savings that is.
I will see.
A lot.
I will see if I can get some graphics up on the screen for you, but I didn't have those prepared for this evening. I apologize. We can potentially publish this report. I don't think there's anything non-public information about it, so we could put it out there and make it available.
Yeah, I just want to lift Mike and Dan up specifically. They partnered to work through this, and to, first of all, to identify some of the issues we had with our HVAC system. And it was very critical to do that. Obviously, we're evaluating now our life in this building, but it's pretty clear that we had to do the work we had to do. But just in managing a huge project like this, I just really want to lift Mike up for his, he's got a lot of experience in city management, and it really shone through in this project and being able to, and as you know, from projects like this, they almost never go according to plan, and for various reasons. You're dealing with, you know, contractors, nothing against contractors, but they're often beholden to other things happening in the industry, and, you know, service delays and all that sort of thing. So every time, we're going to lift both of them up for their love of communication transparency and the ability to work through all of the challenges, because all of their customers are inside this room, all of us are leadership, and some of us are impacted more than others. I don't think my heat's still working, Mike. So.
How do you think we're saving money?
Yes, we are, at my expense. So thank you very much. It's, yeah. That's all. Put some socks on. That's what my parents say. Put some socks on. No, appreciate the update. I think anytime you can save money and offer equal or better services is a huge win, right? Is this kind of a one-time effort, where all of the adjustments that were expected are done, or will there be more improvements down the road? Is this like an ongoing program?
I don't think we're anticipating more improvements. We're anticipating having to put more money in to maintain code, and to maintain heating, and all life safety in the building. But at this point, I don't think we're looking at too many improvements. If we went into a major improvement of this building, the building was not sprinkled, so it would require a huge investment just to sprinkle the building if we were to do that. So that's another $200,000 to $300,000 minimum just to do that part of the project before you get to anything else in the building.
He's generously underestimating that cost.
I don't know the number for sure, Mike, so I always underestimate for a while, but the Scotty Principle.
I was able to grab a graphic. Is this the one that you were talking about? This, yeah. And it's, I like hearing, based on the report, that the results that we gained in terms of cost savings and energy savings, both, were exceeding what they promised us when they kicked off this project. So they did, with this project, it did under-promise and over-deliver, which is always my preference, too, so.
Any other questions, comments, folks? Okay. Thank you very much, Mike and Dan. We'll go to New Business 9.01. We'll hand it over to Lucretia to give a little bit of background. Use of Vehicles for Library Business Policy Employee Manual, First Reading.
Are we working?
Yes, we are. All right. Thank you. So what we're hoping to do with So what we're hoping to do with establishing the driving policy is to address, I would say, three areas. We're hoping to first look at safety, of course prioritize safety for staff and for patrons. We want to also make clear what the expectations are of staff and the use of vehicles. I think the expectations make it, how do I say it? Pretty clear what is required of staff, thank you, Jeannie, what's required of staff if they are operating a library vehicle on library business. Along with that, we are also clarifying what, how someone might use a personal vehicle for library business, not how, but the limitations as to when you would use it, of course, because tied to safety is our liability, right? So we want to ensure that we're managing risk in that way. But then also having a plan for ourselves internally on how we're maintaining and managing that. So I know it says first reading. Do you want me to read it? Okay.
No, just to set up the, just like you've done, but I just, and wanted to speak on the liability piece, too, and thank you, Lucretia. I mean, it's important as an organization, you know, in the last two years, we're really focused on lots of policy procedure, making sure we have processes that are replicable beyond this administration, making sure that they're, you know, that they can extend and protect the library. So in this case, we do have people who are driving library vehicles on library time, and we're, we have taxpayer resources that have been used to purchase these vehicles. And so definitely wanting to minimize the impact and to protect our staff. I mean, because, look, if you don't meet the requirements to drive a vehicle, us telling you you can't do it is protecting you ultimately, because if you're out in our vehicle and you get into an accident and you're not supposed to be driving, we don't want to put your life at risk, and we don't want to put the lives of others at risk. So really, at the highest level, this is about safety and security and making sure that we're being smart and we don't leave the taxpayers' dollars open to be taken in a lawsuit. And so that's what's a principle important to us. We have fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers to make sure that our policies and processes around vehicle use in our library system is sound, because we do have the necessity for folks to drive, because we have a mobile services unit, we have couriers. And so it's important that we protect everybody involved. And so that's why this policy came about. It has gone through legal review, and so we're at the point now where our library attorney has looked at it and found no issues other than some small, you know, wording here and there. And so we'll be cleaning that stuff up. It's available for the board to respond, and we'll bring it back next month for a second read, and we'll ask the board at that time pending no feedback from our union partners. And fortunately, we've worked with our union partners on this even months ago when we started to contract bargain and we started to go through the process of interest-based bargaining. We started to play with this policy as a way to practice that particular, you know, methodology for bargaining. And so that has been communicated with our human resources team, and Dan's been very involved in that as well. Dan, I don't know if you have any commentary regarding this policy?
No, it's all about safety and reducing our liability and our risk in doing this, so.
I have a question. You know, I know this is in the procedural piece, but Lucretia, you made a note particularly to, it's important to identify where the thresholds are and how we're going to respond in certain circumstances. And so I'm just curious, in terms of, sometimes in these policies, they're sort of a one-and-done, you know, kind of a one-and-done. So I'm just curious how you determine the thresholds of, in some cases, two or more kind of incidents? I mean, is that common? Is that, where did that come from, or what's the philosophy behind?
Our intention is to align it to the state, pretty much the state standard. So the state has a standard for, you know, if you get so many driving infractions, your license is suspended, you know, temporarily, long-term, or, you know, you get it taken away. So our intention is to align it to that, because that's essentially the floor, so to speak. And that way, it's fair. Yeah.
It seemed generous.
Yeah.
So I think for clarification of process, we're looking at the first reading here. Everybody can get comfortable with it. They can offer questions, comments, and then we've got homework to do if we want to, if we have more comments, and the goal is to pass next month.
Yeah, pending no other feedback, that would be the goal.
Okay.
And part of the intent around first readings is not only to give us some familiarity, but then in that same context, the public has an opportunity to kind of ponder and think and provide public comment in the, for the next meeting before we take up a vote.
Yeah, absolutely. Good point. Good point. Any further questions, comments on the first draft of the policy?
No, I just want to acknowledge the fact that we have a policy team, I think you all know that, consisting of Lucretia Robertson, Shannon Peterson, and Jeannie Allen. And so I want to thank the policy team for taking on the task of reviewing policies. Lucretia was the lead on this, but our policy team from here on out has the authority to bring policies forward to leadership team first for review, and obviously in collaboration with our union partners. That is the process by which we'll be bringing policies to this body. And so having an established team within our leadership team that focuses on not only new policies, but also amending current policy, because, you know, we always have to look at policy and make sure it stands the test of time based on the current environment. So I really want to lift up our policy team. So we just instituted it, and so they put a lot of hard work into that process. And so thank you for being our eyes and our, you know, process people. Appreciate you.
Thanks so much. So if no other questions on the policy, we have some homework to do, and we'll offer our feedback. So we'll go to Agenda Item 10, future meeting dates. Next board meeting with the Long Range Strategic Planning Committee meeting is Tuesday, August 27. And with that, we will adjourn. Thank you very much, and happy birthday, Annie.